Good morning ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome our Speaker here. As the record is clear, it's about a forum, I'd like to call the meeting to order. All commissioners are here, I've asked, uh, Mr. Letts. Your name is, please, the name of your authority, Commissioner.
First of all, I didn't want to look at them like bastards, but I was. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on which we stand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All in Texas, where our flag is, to be Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You're up, now get to the meeting, please. Lord, thank you for loving us and thank you for watching over us and all that you do for us. We want to come to you this time and ask that you be with this assembly, give us patience, help us with our decision-making, just give us the sermon on what's your will and what you have us to do. Be with us and guide us in all that we do today, in Jesus' name, oh great.
Thank you.
Mr. Dear D. D. Good morning, Air Officer, Commissioner. I have some great concerns about what is transpiring here in San Jacinto County. Number one, the issue of fire protection and what is taking place here in Precinct 11 and the Cold Springs Water Department. The citizens are being jeopardized by this whole thing that's taking place. And we're wondering where our protection is going to come from. We're wondering how many out of the main departments, how many people are standing by. I know that nothing is going to take place immediately and there is a 60-day period. However, this that is taking place here could have been avoided and could have been done in a more diplomatic manner without us being concerned about our security and our safety. And I'm hoping that the results of this meeting and the input that we're getting from the general public, instead of it just being a minority like it has been in the past, we need the participation that we're getting today in order to get our ideas across and our opinions across and for you to take just authority. The other concern that I have is our Sheriff's Department. Our Sheriff's Department was furnished radios last year that were supposed to be allegedly top of the line, include two different frequencies. They were of a yellow color, which made them very, very visible if somebody was out and there was someone that was a shooter, they could actually locate them. The radios are unusable and even though the budget came out of the last administration, I know for a fact a number of the officers in this administration have had situations where they have been out and in desperate need of radio transmission and they're not able to utilize what was spent last year. So, in due respect to our Sheriff's Department and the officers and the safety and the security of our community, we need to take a look at that very, very closely. And item number 24 should address that problem, but with the grant for $1.2 million that was granted to this administration, there should be plenty of money for safety products for this Sheriff's Administration. And our citizens and our taxpayers deserve more than we're getting. Thank you.
Dear E. W.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm coming here as a private citizen and I'm not representing any organization. My concern is how we would mature the fire suppression activities that is coming growth. You know, you hear stories that potentially this county could double its size in the next five years and so my concern, my question is all about how we position the fire suppression services for that growth. I see many business advantages to greater integration and consolidation of fire suppression and including economies of scale, standardized operations and equipment, improved resource allocation, greater personnel qualifications, equipment certifications, increased accountability, and better use of tax funds by consolidation. And having been involved and dealt with numerous reorganizations and mergers before I retired, I know that this process is never easy and takes time, but organizations need to evolve with the environment. I'm seeking compromise, negotiation, mediation to prevent the loss of talented and experienced volunteer firefighters. The fire departments and the ESB already have a shortage of volunteers who possess the right skillset to first develop a vision and then execute it. This takes time and evolves and involves developing a strategy, gaining buy-in from stakeholders, and ultimately operationalizing it. So I'm asking the commissioners to consider if there's room to unwind this situation a bit and hit the pause button before taking any irreversible action. I suggest slowing the pace of change and using a more measured approach and everyone focusing on developing a shared vision and functional goals, second on the people we serve. So just basically asking you, before removing anybody or enabling your moving, we just pause a bit.
Thank you, Sheriff. Ronald Craven.
Yes, sir, I'm here with the reporter, I'm here with Gary and the rest of the fire department and I have to agree with what he said, we just need to take things easy, pause, reconsider, and look at everything we're looking at, just don't rush into anything, okay? I have to agree with him and my super chief and the other chiefs.
Linda Allen, Allen Wire, did I say that right?
You're getting better at it.
You're getting better, you're getting better.
It took me a few years, but I've had to make it 45 years.
You've had more practice than I have.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for your time, thank you. You told the citizens that they're people that find you here.
Yeah, they already know why.
Good morning. But thank you all for your time, citizens here and the people that work here. I wanted to just make the common interest. We're all in the people business, that's what life is about, in every aspect of everything you do. I worked in a couple of different industries in my prime and thankfully, I'm retired now, but I work harder now than I ever did when I worked, I pay for it because I'm a professional volunteer, I volunteer a lot here in this community. Because I love this community and I believe in the people and I believe in this town. So I have a vested interest in that, I get paid for that by any means in this world, yes, I know, hopefully. But I do have concerns as well and also praises. I do want to make sure and noticing some things that are going on around town, that I just want to make sure that we all know that we're all accountable for our actions. You're the bad or otherwise, sometimes accountability is for not being a leader. So we have a job as people of this country, of this world, to be responsible for our cities and our families and where God places us. And also, because I know that there seems to be some issues around about trust, you know, about who you can trust. And trust is important, if you don't trust somebody, you're not going to follow them. Any good leader knows they have to have trust to be able to build something. And honesty, and there's a lack of communication between some of the different nonprofits and the people here that work together in this community. And also not working as a team, you know, a team of horses is pulling different directions, that's not going anywhere. And actually, we have chaos, is what you're having, there's a lot of chaos going on around here in town at this moment in time. And it doesn't have to be that way, sometimes I think the hardest thing, even for myself because I have a type A personality, is to learn to step back and get out of my own skin and get into somebody else's. My grandma used to always say, walk away from somebody else's moccasins. So that we have to understand what's going on in other people's lives, because we're in the people business and everything we do affects a lot of people in this town and the state, this country. And chaos is not going to answer. So, you know, if there's going to be something done, I just ask that there be a plan, a written plan. You know, you can talk all day long, but like, you know, like I understand, look at truth on the tree, what's happening, what are the results? And is it good results or is it bad results? So there needs to be written plans on things that are going to happen and also, you can have a team, it's good if people agree and you ask people their opinions and listen to their opinions. So there's a lot of that I feel in some of the organizations around here. And I think we all want to grow, we all, I think, everyone I've come across in this town, loves this town, has a good heart, and wants the best for this town. So I just ask everybody prayerfully, consider everything that comes out of our mouth before we say it, and everything we write, make sure that it's not hurting someone else. We're supposed to do everything in love, and some of the things that are going on are just done in love. And some of it should be done one-on-one, face-to-face, and if you need a mediator to help with that conversation, then give you the answers. But anyway, just want the best, thank you all for your time and thank you to the citizens of this city.
Couldn't agree with you more, ma'am. Let's see. Bill Arundel?
There he is. Thank you, Commissioners Court. I'd like to take this opportunity to represent Shepherd, Texas. We are on the map, we're on Highway 59, and we are a part of San Jacinto County. Now, I do want to make a public statement about our Sheriff's Office first. You from the Sheriff's Office, would y'all please stand? Do you represent San Jacinto County? I want to publicly, in front of all of y'all, Commissioners Court, and tell you, you're doing a fine job. I never believed, I never believed a dog catcher could make sheriff. Now, I posted that on Facebook, but I take those words back. You made me wrong, and I admit when I'm wrong, you're doing a fine job and you other people are doing a fine job and I thank you for it. The problem in Shepherd is, we've had a tax office window in Shepherd. I don't know how many years, Judge, you probably know.
Probably 15 or so, I guess.
We started out with, we started out, and I'm sorry, I apologize again, I don't have my hearing aids again, so if I'm loud.
We want everybody here, Mr. Bill.
If I'm loud, I'm too loud, but I don't hardly hear anything y'all are saying, I'm 60% deaf without my hearing aids. But we went from three days a week, having a tax office in Shepherd, to one day a week. Now, we're zero days a week. As your taxpayers from Shepherd, and I'm offended by it. I've called your office, I asked your secretary to tell you I wanted to talk to you, and I did not get a written call back. And you're not supposed to, I didn't call you on your phone, I don't have you in my phone, you're not listed, yourself's not listed, and I know personally that you would have talked to me.
Yes, sir.
And also, I want to say that your secretary was not nice to me. I called her down both times I called, I called her down, she might not tell you that.
Probably not.
But I called her down on the way she was speaking to me. And Judge, that's a reflection on you. And Donny is our only representation in county court, in county government, that will speak for us. Precinct 2 is very important, tax base for San Jacinto County, and we're not being represented. Zero representation at the tax office is not representing me and the few people from Shepherd that are here, it's not representing them. And Donny will tell you, it irritates me to no end because first thing he asks me, are you calmed down enough to talk today? Donny knows me, I have a hot temper to begin with, but I had a stroke 11 years ago, and from that stroke, it caused me to have anger issues, so I take medication for that. But I also told the doctor, don't give me too much medication because I won't be able to get angry when I need to be angry, okay? And so I've taken my medicine before I come up here. But I just want to read to you, Donny's text, I sent him a text. And it don't show up what day, Donny, but it was one day last week.
I think it was Saturday.
I'm going to read this verbatim. "Donny, Bill Arundel here. I saw, I want someone to fill the tax office in Shepherd. We have gone, as of right now, at least three weeks without any representation. And I've talked to Betty. Betty can tell you how pissed off I am. I lost it with Betty. I apologized to Betty in open court this morning, my wife apologized to me for me. She thought I called her a liar because I said, you're talking out of the side of your mouth. I didn't call her a liar. I will be at Commissioner Court Wendy, Wednesday, express my feelings and use my three minutes. I have called Chris's office and complained. I don't like driving to Cold Springs to get my tags, which I had, she had to do monthly, for my vehicle. It pisses me off that we have no weapons installation in Shepherd from county government. Our revenue speaks for itself in Precinct 2. Amen."
That's right.
I'm talking to Donny, me and you both see eye to eye almost everything. I'm asking you, I'm asking for your support sincerely, Bill Arundel, and I'll address that to the court. I'm asking for your support in getting us a tax office open. I've talked to Betty because of vacation, because of understaffing, because of sickness. They have closed the office in Shepherd. It's going to be closed, I called Monday, for the next three months, two to three months, verbatim. That's unacceptable to me and the citizens of Shepherd, Texas. I'm a senior citizen, I want to say something about that, too. We don't like to drive no more than we have to. I don't come over here unless I have to. But something's been going on since the beginning of time, is the division between Cold Springs and Shepherd. You look and treat us in Precinct 2, I'm telling you all the truth, as second-class citizens, that we don't exist. We see somebody only during election year. That's unacceptable to me. I can be friends with Satan himself, but I won't trust him and I won't turn my back on him. And I also wanted to address the issue about senior citizens. Y'all help us in financing, I used to be on the board, but we increased our, the help financially in 10 years that I've been coming over here. I believe it's 12,000 and something a year. Well, our good President, President Trump and the administration has cut the help that we were getting from them. It has a name.
Meals on Wheels program. Meals on Wheels?
Yeah, well, he's cut the help.
It's not Meals on Wheels.
And so, I'm asking y'all to consider that in your next budget, to increase for Cold Springs, I'm fighting for Cold Springs now, I'm a Shepherdite. We need a little extra help. We've increased our meal for the senior citizens, a dollar to make up the difference. I think I'm through, I probably overran my three minutes, I apologize, Judge. I'm also going to have to leave because I can't hear nothing y'all say, I'm handicapped.
Bill, your dearness, and I thought you, I got the same number, I thought you had my number, if you're welcome to it anytime you want to call me.
I know, Judge, I know.
He's got mine, I appreciate it.
You gotta consider, I'm crazy. I don't, I don't think like the rest of y'all because I've had a stroke. And I have a wife that's always on me about something.
Careful now. Careful now.
I got a, I got a chewing-out Monday when she come from over here talking to Betty.
You got a chewing-out too in the office.
She come down to Donny's office from her office. I don't know what she said, I don't remember.
I probably don't want to repeat it.
I know, y'all not supposed to answer me, but I'm just saying, there's an issue, love, hate, in county government. There's an issue of y'all not considering us as a big part of San Jacinto County compared to Cold Springs. Now, I'm going to say this, Judge, if you was from Shepherd and Betty was from Shepherd, that office would be open, that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go home, I can't hear.
How long has it been public? Very recent, very recent. We have to take any action, Judge.
Well, I thought y'all, well, I take, I thought y'all are the person.
I mean, we hadn't done nothing recently to make us close. All right, I think I have one more, it's Christine here.
Good morning, I'm Christine James, I'm here and addressing for the concerned citizens of San Jacinto County about the ESB Board and Fire Departments. I have been a volunteer for a long time, 20 years. And I agree with the way the ESB Board is going in, the direction that they're going in, because we need some kind of clarifications with all the departments working together. Because as we know, we are thin and we're trying, we're trying to provide a service that is beneficial to the, to the county and as well as the safety of our, of our fire departments. So I agree with the, with the way the ESB Board is in the direction that they're going in for the growth. I don't agree with the way that they're asking us to give up, to relinquish some of our responsibilities as fire departments because we have worked very hard. I don't think that we need to be all individual entities of fire departments, I think we should come together under San Jacinto County. I agree with you, gentlemen, that we really need to take a closer look at this before we have any major decisions made because it is so unclear on the direction that the, how the direction that they're putting in procedure on the way that they're going forward. Sorry to shake up because it's so personal. Everything that I want to convey today has already been addressed by the people, so that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have an announcement to talk to you special about the public community interest with no action. I'm not trying to publicize this, but let me tell you, and the county has no involvement whatsoever, there's some sort of a, I'm hearing through the grapevine that there's some sort of a protest coming up here, I want to say the 14th. Normally, if whoever wants to come and put on an event at the courthouse, people come to the court mainly to let us know, but, you know, to get, make sure that there's permission and so on and so forth. None of that's happened here, but the courthouse is a public area, so I'm just saying it's coming on the 14th, I'm not really sure where all the protests are, but, no, but they have come to the court formally and said anything, but you don't have to come to the court to walk around the sidewalk. Nope, they haven't come to the court formally and said anything, but you don't have to come to the court to walk around the sidewalk, hold up a ticket or whatever they're gonna do anyway. I think the next weekend, we're having the Juneteenth parade. I, I intend to participate in that. That's a. Happens every year. Been doing that for twenty-five years. It, I'll bring it the next weekend, the twenty.
Yes, sir. Sunday, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah.
I could give you input on that, fourteenth.
Yeah, I don't ask for no input on it. The, uh. I just want to tell you though, my oldest church has a birthday on, on that day. Unless my, I be there unless my wife tells me otherwise. After forty-five years, I've, I've learned a few things.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else that we need to share from the island of five?
Yeah, we had a precinct two on Pelican Road there, built a new power plant. And we did a road use agreement. We tried to draft one up and me and Mark met with them Monday. And, uh. They're, they're gonna hire a bunch of local folks. They're supposed to have a work, uh, job fair. Come up over there, date set. We'll have this community center in Shepherd for a job fair. And, uh, it's, it's a big deal, a three-year thought shift. So, it's gonna be a real good deal. It's gonna benefit us a lot in the county and other areas.
It's right across the street from a power plant that's already that generated.
Yes, sir.
What I heard, it's gonna be a big deal.
Judge, I've got one. Because there is a pipeline coming through. I think it's the Kennedy Morgan Pipeline. It's gonna be crossed and a couple roads in precinct one and a bunch up in March area up there and, uh. West Rocky Road. If anybody knows anybody that lives down there. I don't know all those people down there.
I do.
You guys know that? I, I reached out to, uh, Danny Black. He owns one side of the road that goes through and I think, uh, hoops. Something to get to a U T Z that might get on the other side.
That's trapped onto the other side.
Although, so, had it.
You know, right, right where the pipelines don't come through West Rocky Road.
And it is a private road, so I'm just saying, this would be a time and I talked to, I talked and he was willing to come to play.
I'm not complaining about the road.
And prove that private road down through there. So, this might be a chance that the citizens down there know, know somebody down there. I tried to reach out to some, but no luck. But this would be a time for them to try and get them to help out on that road because county can't do it, stop on the road.
I know. Mike Minner called me about that, the preacher. And I told him I would talk to you about, see if you could make the pipeline.
Again, it's, it's private, private road and all that. I'm gonna have to talk to him, but I swear the landlords on both sides, they have the most power.
They've been by my office several times.
I think you got.
I talked about, uh, I asked him about acquisition. I said, oh, he's got about ninety percent acquired. Historically, speaking, the pipelines are good neighbors and have generally cooperated with our commissioners to. Hey, we need a little, you know, y'all need to put some rock on here or whatever. And that's never been a big problem now. It's a, I don't believe this is no fly by night operation. There's been some fly by night that's had a skirt in there, carried the road up and get away. I think this is a, this is a forty-two inch pipeline from what I understand.
And I talked to the, they had three spreads. The ladies in charge, I guess, is making sure they're talking to commissioners and they're crossing the road. Getting in and out of West Rocky Road, listing on there because it's a private road. I don't know if that, somebody else who deals with that, she wasn't involved in that. We, I said, sure, I'll, we talked to her. But I'm just saying it's an opportunity for the landlords to help out on that road in there. If they get called in. So, if you know somebody out there, let them know.
All right. Island number nine, consideration discussion possible vote to approve the road use agreement. I am between San Jacinto County and Longstown Power Plant. That's a very silly you would call.
Yes, sir. We drew a, we're trying to get something passed where they'll. They'll, when they tear up the road, they'll fix the road back to where it was or better. And they got that flaggers on, on twenty-nine fourteen and Pelican and on Falls Lake. And like I said, we've met with them and this is just a simple road use agreement. If they tear it up, they'll fix it. We have two points of contact. That way, when we call a contractor or somebody tearing up something, we don't have to say, well, I'm just a contractor. I work blah, blah, blah. We go straight to the top with it. They get it taken care of.
Where'd you get this? I mean.
He drew it up. We kinda drew it up.
I think we've done these before. I mean, it ain't a two-page discount, a half-page note reading. You think it covers everything it needs to cover?
I think it does. I, we sent it to their people and their people's looking at it too and if they had to make some changes to. If you think there's some changes, I sent it to you.
I didn't, well, I didn't know where you got it from. It just looks a little thin when it comes to, uh. These pipeline people have some power from here.
But they're not, this is energy. This is all by energy.
It's, well, I get it. They're gonna have the pipeline that they're gonna connect to, to operate it.
Yeah, sorry. The pipeline's already there.
I, I, I know.
There's tapping into it. But this is energy theirself. This is.
Right.
Energy power.
Right, right.
I mean, there's some things there you wanna add and change. Hey, I'm all for it and that's what's here.
Don't have to compare it to something I had over there and it'd be real close to it, so.
Yeah. I mean, is there something there you think?
No, I guess it's.
There's something that you think needs to be changed, Judge, or added to it. Hey, I'm all for it.
Which is bad, need to repair. But the cost of doing things, I think the cost estimates reveal that. For whatever reason, we, we had to shave the link down.
Yes, sir.
So, where are we at now? What do we settle on?
Over fifty-eight hundred feet.
Fifty-hundred, fifty-eight, that's still over a mile.
Not much, but it's over. Yes, sir. The fires have just, uh, made us have to claw some of that money back. This is, uh, twenty-nineteen B R funding from G L O. So, it hasn't been around for a really long time.
Well, I'm telling us, Commissioner, she's, she's inherited a very healthy fund balance over there and she wanted to. Say the road was this long and, and if you got cut back fifty-eight, if you want to make up the difference, you can. You could use some of your fund balance.
That's why I want them to love to move all the way down the road because we are getting this.
Yeah, good, good.
Yes, sir.
About nine other things to say. Unlike the city of Point Blank, you, you haven't bid this project.
Correct. We, we have not bid this project yet.
So, do you think in your projection, it's gonna come in equal to the seven hundred?
So, Point Blank was one of the, the justifications for me to kind of reevaluate the length because when we bid the Point Blank project, and I've talked too much about that, but. The bids came in substantially higher than we originally anticipated, just based on how long it takes to get the funding and then go to bidding by the time those projects roll around or.
I've been here for twenty-five years on and off and I, usually they fudge a little bit so we don't miss the bucks over there. And you sound like you try to be right on the money and come up short, like, and that happens from time to time.
It's a, it's a balancing act between the two when you prep projects. You wanna get as much road as you, you can on the actual application. Because you can't adjust your application for more road. You can always claw it back though, so.
And these are new times that we're in. I mean, the price of everything, it just keeps up and up and up and up and up. I don't know. So, must a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would second that. I would still like to thank David Ramey because I know this, I'm getting the benefit of it, but he did the work.
So, you need to take this court for a while and then get to go after that deal.
I think this court pays. You don't have no idea how bad that road.
We gave him that, the opportunity because you got cheated out of another project. So, we're trying to make it.
Thank y'all for cheating.
They can get cheated out of nothing. Oh, they didn't? Like, for whatever reason.
Get in the fire park.
They didn't apply for it.
The fire.
Sit up here and act like you're cheating somebody out of.
Fire, the fire before.
Don't say we did.
That's a common tip. I'm grateful.
Anyway, I get what you're talking about. We got left off. Not by this court, though. That's all I'm trying to, not from this. So. I have a motion by Commissioner Tuno, second by Commissioner Donnie. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, two, nine, five, zero. You got, uh. So, the, uh. Who's in charge of, you're gonna put out the, you're gonna send the notice to the paper.
The ad will be in the paper tomorrow?
We discussed that. We had it on there because I said, ain't hardly much chance at all if it's not passed.
Right.
We were anxious to get this moved. Sometimes our auditor does that. You got that, he's gonna take care of that. When you open your paper in the morning, it should be in there.
It'll be there.
All right.
Thank you all.
Island number thirteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve a batch of one point seven, two, one, four eight acre track and a twenty-five point sixty eight acre track. Peter Whittaker survey actually three hundred and four for Terry E. Missoney. Yep, yep.
Everybody.
So, this person, now, is Terry Missoney here?
No, Miss White.
They've got a thirty-three, almost thirty-four acre track and does not touch the road and they own a twenty-five point six acre track. Does touch the road. What we're, I guess their proposal is to designate a sixty-foot strip of land. That I guess will, when they sell this here, that this will go with it.
Yes, they're gonna sell that back track eventually and she designating that sixty-foot track to go with that so that they have access to it.
Thank y'all for changing it to sixty foot.
She wanted to do the thirty foot, but we had to do sixty foot.
Thirty foot wouldn't pass a rules. I mean, we, we, we're trying to not get stuff or have people get mad at us because we didn't manage things like this, so. Sixty foot is just about necessary. Time you be on the road and itches and then you, we try to leave a little bit in there for pipelines or whoever, you know, utility.
So, are they gonna try to bat it up smaller than thirty-three acres when they sell or you don't know?
We don't know. She's selling that back track eventually. Not yet that she's gonna sell that back track. And that's why she did that strip going in there. She's selling that to them also. We're going to say that.
That's a little different approach, wouldn't you say, Commissioner, than we normally used to?
Kind of backdooring if you will.
I can agree with you.
But, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a zip track right now, thirty-three acres, so. I'm making a motion to grant a variance.
I'll second it.
Second. Those of you out there in the listening audience, like I said earlier, they got, these people have a twenty-five acre track that touches the east end of the road. And then they have thirty-three acres in the back that don't have a good access. They're cutting off, off the north end of the track, sixty-foot long strip, wide strip. We didn't vote against it. And the reason that they had to come and get a commission is because legislature fest laws would say anytime you cut up a piece of land. That you're subdivided. When you have a subdivision, you have to approach the court and get approval of the plan. So, we have some control over what, what's going on out in our community. So, that's what they've done here. They're just basically asking not to, I'm not making it a subdivision at this point, but they're getting a variance to. Cut this by, this, what, maybe acres? It's one point seven acres of strip so that has access. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, two, nine, five, zero. How many do we need to sign? You need this paperwork to that sign? How much? Is there another spot on there?
Lock it out.
I ran right past number eleven, consideration discussion possible vote to approve proclamation, June nineteenth, San Jacinto County.
I thought it was, thought it was bad.
They don't be surprised. That's what it's there in the back though. Twenty-eight too much. Twenty-eight aren't too much. You don't buy that, do you? What'd you pay for it? We bought it. You leased it though, didn't you?
We're gonna have a motion on number eleven. I read it out.
I'm making a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tuno, a second by Commissioner Marlon. Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, two, nine, five, oh. Proclamation, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. Union Major General Gordon Grant, you read general order number three to the people of Galveston. Whereas general order number three stated, the people of Texas are informed in that. In accordance with the proclamation from the Executive Office of the United States, all slaves are free. Whereas large celebrations of June nineteenth began in eighteen sixty-six and have continued regularly and is now recognized as a national holiday. And whereas the Commissioners Court of San Jacinto County recognizes the contributions African-Americans have made to the growth and heritage of San Jacinto County. Therefore, be it proclaimed by Prince Paul, San Jacinto County Judge and the Commissioners Court of San Jacinto County. Will hereby recognize June nineteenth as Juneteenth and encourage our citizens to join in celebration of this holiday given under this. Under my hand, Executive Seal of Office of San Jacinto County on this, the eleventh day of June, twenty twenty-five.
Let's get out another round of bridge.
Aye. Out of number fourteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve and adopt by resolution, Texas Health and Safety Code, Section seven seven five oh four two two, enabling the removal of employee DSD boards under my resolution. DSD board has met last... Was it last Monday or Monday before? Anyway, they recently met. I think I attended... The meeting started at six. Mr. Donley was there. Mr. Schwing was there. We all sat and separated so we wouldn't be, you know, having problems with opening meetings. Rules that we all find out like... I think, I don't know if I got three of y'all here, but I've noticed y'all dispersed, so you're not... Us public officials cannot be in certain places without posting an agenda, so anyway. We went to the meeting, I think I had a grandson playing All-Star baseball right down the road, so I left until about seven, and I think they stayed at it till rumor has it ten thirty or so.
I left at nine forty-five minutes ago, and we didn't stay long.
I get it. So, a matter of... I think they... I didn't see the agenda, but I think it was a matter of contracts or something like that was the only thing on the agenda. A matter of great importance to myself and everybody else in the room. Everybody, I believe everybody in the room wants to see more efficient fire departments, more organization, better training for our people, better equipment. I think we all agree on that. And I'd say, I left after an hour of the meeting, because, anyway. I understand the next day I get calls from this one and that one. The mayor's about to say, there's probably a lot of confusion about what goes on, what went on, and there's stuff all over Facebook which I don't... I put... If that goes where I put it on there, but I don't know how to track everybody's threads. Anyway, there's lots of discussion about fire stations and fire protection and all that. Well, I believe, as a result of a lot of careful consideration and deliberation, I believe they... The board, DSD board elected to, I believe canceled the contract at one of the fire departments, Coles Springs, I believe. And it's my understanding, hadn't read the minutes, I don't think the minutes have even been typed up or approved, but it's not an immediate thing. It was, I think, I'm told that the contract provides that there's sixty-day period. I've looked at contracts in that before, and the previous, it used to be a hundred and twenty, and then it went down to ninety, and I think the last time they renewed the contract, I believe it was reduced to sixty. But anyway, it's all in compliance with the proposed contract, and sixty days gives time hopefully for all the relevant people involved and organizations to get together, and I pray that we can... This will all get worked out, and we won't be... We don't have fire protection. Yeah, I've been told to county employees, I'm gonna be the one turning the bell on. The younger ones are gonna have to hold the hose if courthouse catches on. Yeah, I wanna make... But seriously, so, after numerous talking to different people, asking what can we do? Well, Commissioners Court, we get to look to, anytime there's a problem in the community, what are y'all gonna do about it? Had a fellow, chewed my ear off because tax office ain't opening Shepherd. I didn't know it had been closed, but that falls on the electric officials. But anyways, um... So I get to looking up, I don't... The only time I usually come to the DSD meeting is if I'm asked. I used to take great pride every time they'd elect new people. They'd ask me to come down there, and I'd swear I'm all in. I'm proud to do that. So I've sit patiently and listened, and, like I say, when asked by the community, the mayor, and various others, what can we do? Basically, what Commissioners Court does, we put appointees on the DSD board. We have, there's five of us, there's five of them, and each one of us nodding to somebody, and that's kinda how it goes. It's not done every year, because you wouldn't want to be replacing a whole board. It's stacked, so you replace two one year, and three the next, or vice versa. So I go looking up, and I'm no expert at this, at these statutes, but I'm gonna get to the pertinent statute in the Health and Safety Code. I'm supposed to have a statute right here. Let me see. I think it's under seven seven five oh four two two. Seven seven five of the Health and Safety Code talks about all the creation of DSD boards and DSD districts, and most everything that has something to do with DSDs is in that section. So I look down through there, and I see that the court has absolutely no authority to remove anybody from the board unless we opt to act under seven seven five oh four two two A, which says, "This section does not apply to a district unless the Commissioners Court of the county in which the district is located adopts this section by resolution." So I put it on the agenda. The court wants to... That's a tool, I guess, we could have, and you can only use it in very extreme measures. If we pass the resolution, a lot of other things would have to happen before anybody would actually be removed. And let me get down to that. There's only about three grounds. We'd have to... There'd have to be a determination that somebody was incompetent or something, you know? I don't want to bore you with the legal definition of incompetence either. That's an extremely, uh... You know, I don't see that happening unless somebody got sick or whatever, and they'd probably resign or something if they got... Where they were physically incompetent. Next is official misconduct, and it doesn't define... It refers to Section eighty-seven oh one one of the local government code. Official misconduct as opposed to just, I guess, plain vanilla misconduct as defined by Section seventy-eight oh oh one of the local government code. And that's about it, about the reasons why you could do such a thing. There would have to... Let me finish this. There had to be a hearing in, uh... You know, thirty days before any such hearing was to be held, you'd have to notify the board members in an action and provide the board member with an opportunity to show cause why the member should not be removed. Now, I wasn't there, so I don't know if there was any misconduct. It concerns me as a life long resident in Coles Springs and that Coles Springs Volunteer Fire Department apparently is... Has a potential of being no more if they get their contract canceled, because the DSD collects point one oh of your tax dollars, and they have a pretty hefty budget, and when those were created, by the way, we used to, we funded fire departments back in the day through fire districts, and it was, you know, it was... It's a much better system, and the powers that be back in those days decided to go with DSD, and the DSD's done some great things, and I part their service. They've done a terrific job doing it. So it was an improvement to move to the DSD form, but... I talked to some of the old timers, and I don't want to point anybody out, Lou. Uh, he was around back when a lot of this happened. Anyway, the idea was, they basically are managers of the money, and they dispersed it out to all the fire departments so they could have what they need to protect our homes and businesses apart. And I don't know how we got to this point, but I hope during a sixty-day period, some... There'd be some meeting of the minds and so forth to resolve this, because, like I said earlier, everybody in the room wants a better fire protection for the whole community and so on and so forth. So I think that my effort to get some communication going, judging by this crowd, has been successful. Now, I heard some wise comments earlier about, you know, slow your road, big boy. You might not wanna just jump out and do this, but it's the deal out of me. I want everybody to know is, the next line, the next agenda item is not remove Joe Blow or somebody. I just want to get everybody to the table, and if the court has some comments, you know...
But Joe, y'all agree with it, and that's us being trying to be transparent on all this. We can't all get together and just talk about the behind, you know, close the door or anything like that. So this is one of those forums, sometimes, and I'm with the judge, and I'm one that asked him to put this on there also. When I first heard about it, what was going on, I had some concern, and this was one of the things we came up with. So I'm just one of the commissioners, or some of the others made too, that wanted this on the agenda here to look at. So I'm gonna say I look out here, and I see probably ten, maybe more, of people that I've talked to before I got here, because... And the judges are like, try to make it to as many DSD board meetings as I can. And I didn't, personally, just sitting out there, I didn't see this coming, and I missed a few of them and all that. I thank them a long time, from what I've learned out there and coming. But one thing I want to do real quick, I don't think we can say enough, is to thank the volunteers, because the DSD, I'm wondering if you're not... DSD is made up of employees, the volunteers, all the... I think Nish and our, uh... The different fire chiefs, they're paid employees, but all of those are volunteers. All the volunteer firefighters out there, all volunteers out there. So I wanna throw out a thank you to everybody that takes their time, because you could be doing something else.
Me too.
To serve the community of that.
I would like to say we also could be, if we did misconduct, we could be thrown off too. But I feel like in four years, if we do a really, really bad job, they can throw us off right there. So I don't feel like rushing it just because it's unpopular.
I'm sure you can be thrown off. I've been thrown off.
When it's a popular decision that the boards are trying to make, I don't think it's a good time to mid-strangle those.
Before I... Let me go listen to you. My military background was all volunteering for the last few years. I've been to Detroit and everything, so I'm very familiar with working with that duty and volunteers. Same thing with firefighters. I was in Funky Evergreen for like five years, Coles Springs, my brother was there too. My dad, all circumvolunteers. So I've talked to some of them about this also. The school board, same thing, volunteer deal, right? So with that, as I try to get my arms around this issue and talk to people, what I learned from it is I think we all are still going for what we're going in the same direction. And we just heard from Mr. Deeter there, he was concerned about it, and wanted to see it fixed. Uh, like your Mr. Wolf said down here, about taking a pause. And after I spent a couple days now talking to people and all that, I'd like that to be presented, that we do take a pause in there. But as Christine over here said, assumes, there hasn't been a major decision made in sixty days, you know? So there already has been a step taken that we need to see a pause. We gotta figure out what kind of pause we need here. I'm proposing out there, just throw out to the DSD, some of what I heard that was pretty common across the board, is that we need to see a three- and five-year plan. I mean, you guys know, y'all been talking and everything, get something on writing, and get it out. The miscommunication I can get out there, because they didn't, for whatever reason, I'm not telling them, people don't know what you're trying to do.
I agree with that, and I'll discuss that with the DSD board, and I'm willing to negotiate with them back and forth. However, I really like the volunteers also, and definitely respect what they do. I think we got common ground. These are reasonable people on both sides.
The other one is the five oh one three C. There was confusion on the housing meeting, the others, that we were all there, and you thought it could continue. That was another concern with the firefighters. Are we gonna lose that? So spell that out if that's possible, okay? So help us out on that. Um... We need to, we need... I'd like to see a second. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Cut the points along there.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Judge.
There's a lot... I'm putting that, what little I'm putting out, because there's a lot of stuff floating around, and I'm trying to help clear some of it up best I can, but I could be wrong. But I did a little look at it, and I saw, I think part of the problem is, I think, and I wasn't aware of this until after that, but I believe the Coles Springs Fire Department had sought help to fix the roof or something. They approached the city, and the city said, sure, but it's fine standing, but they put out about fifty thousand dollars to fix the roof. But they wanted to, for whatever reason, they wanted, I guess, some pla... Anyway, after the dust settled, they inducted the title of the property in the city's name. But let me back up. This ain't the first time the Coles Springs Fire Department has had their own property in their own name, back in nineteen seventy-two, fifty-three years ago. James Sewell, uh, steeded them, uh, property right there across from the Methodist Church, next to the restaurant, uh... It was Elaine's back in that day, and, uh, they had a fire department there. That was kind of their first beginnings. I've read some agreements in the record, I think. I don't know, not many in here know who Tommy Hollis was, but he was a, uh... He was the first fire chief, and Tommy was a real estate developer, and I know, knowing Tommy, part of his desire when they formed the fire department was to help homeowners' insurance come down. If we had a volunteer fire department, that affects who's thanks are not paying enough for homeowners' pay now already. I mean, my goodness, it's gone through the roof. That was brought to my attention this morning. But anyway, they got this piece of property, and that's where they operated until about... And Mr. Robert Atkins prepared this incident. He was our county attorney back at that time. So let's move the clock forward a little bit to October the ninth, two thousand and three. I know I was consulted about this. I've never been a volunteer fireman. I've... My son's a Houston firefighter, but I'm not in the fire department. But I helped anyway I can, so they came to me about, uh... They wanted to acquire the... They, we worked out a deal with the school district. Lynn Raven was superintendent. Here's your signature. October the ninth, they acquired two point oh six acres right there where the current fire station is right now. I know a little bit about it, because I do the DDA. Got my name right here. And it says it was returned to me. I don't think I still have the original. And that was acquired, I think there was a HUD grant of forty-five thousand and that grant lasted in, well, I think it's been paid off, but I don't know that for sure. But the note was payable. They, they make them really long term so you can pay low payments. It's scheduled to mature in two thousand and forty-three, but it, I believe it's been paid off. I don't know how or, but anyway, it's paid off. So for fifty-three years, Cold, and I think when they did this, I think they sold to Brother Rogers the old facility to help put down the new facility. I, that's what I understand that. But, uh.
Do we know who paid the forty-five thousand?
I, I have no idea. That's what I just said. So then the next thing I see in here, I did not throw this one up, but here's a deed, December twenty-seventh, Cold Springs Fire Department, deed to City of Cold Springs. Guess that's when they put up the fifty thousand to fix roof and whatever else. Matt came to me and talked to me and he said, man, we're just a willing party. We don't want to see fire department go out of business here. We're going to help any way. We're going to do what we can do to make sure the citizens of this, in this colony have fire protection. I think they've offered to pay the bills and the insurance and the maintenance and I think they're doing that now. They're just, the young lady talked about, we're all pulling the same wagon. They got themselves up and put a harness on and said, here, we won't pull some because historically, I've been mayor of Cold Springs. We didn't have a lot of fun back in the day. We didn't contribute much at all over the years. So to see them step up on a fifty thousand dollar way warms my heart. But let me look at this deed here and let's go back to the back. I think there's concerns about, oh, they could, what'd you say Denise? They might end up turning it into a library or something. Well, let me read this verbatim. It is expressly agreed and understood by and between Grantor and Red Tea, Grantor's the seller, Red Tea's the buyer, that in the event City of Cold Springs stopped using property as fire department or related service, property reverts back to the Grantor and the conveyance shall be known and loaded.
The E S D's never seen that contract Judge.
Ma'am?
The E S D has never seen that.
I didn't say they have.
Okay.
So anyway, there's no danger of this thing, the city taking it and running off with it or selling it or doing something else. I just want to bring that up because there's a lot of misinformation floating around. I think the city and the E S D officials ought to get together and I know folks on both sides. I'm pretty sure y'all can get this thing worked out.
The building was signed over to the city and what, what route did we go to sign that?
You'd have to ask somebody who knows.
I'm making a motion to table this.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Marsh to table it. I have a second by, uh, Commissioner Domine. Any other comments? All in fair say aye. I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I don't know. We're going to all follow the vote together. All right. Thank you so much. And I believe it in the E S D and the city's hands. If there's anything the county can do to help in any way. That's why we want you guys though. So y'all can, that's y'all's matter. Thank you so much. I have a number fifteen, consideration discussion and possible vote to approve a contract for collection service from the E S D two extension campaign. How many votes to approve the contract? Back on fourteen, I usually recite what we did. Motion to table, pass, unanimous. Okay. I have a motion on fifteen by Commissioner Matuno to approve the E S D collection contract with the, E S D two collection contract with the, uh, passed. So I have a second. I have a second by Commissioner Swin. I, I don't know. It sounds like you're making a pretty good deal. I don't think they could hire, the amount of work you're taking on for forty-five hundred, you, there's no way you could contract it out anywhere else and get it done for forty-five hundred. So it remains a heck of a deal, Ms. Davis. And that's signed and I, I believe there is a vote that was represented here. I believe they're okay with this because you signed the contract, correct?
Hi, I'm Marie Marvist. I'm a commissioner of the E S D two. And we have, we approved the contract.
Yes, uh, and by the way, that fourteen, the resolution was not for just, it was for any E S D. So we have that two in our, all right. Any other comments? All in fair say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, that's unanimous, five to zero. Tommy stepped out, four to zero. There's two contracts, one way and one the other. You're a member of the court. If you don't want to sign, it's, it won't happen. I have a number fifteen, consideration creation discussion and possible vote to approve the tax health and employee benefits pool renewal rates for twenty twenty-five, twenty Oh my God. Everyone of them to place the sign?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is our, um, county employee benefits renewal notice.
Morning ma'am, who's doing?
Hi, I'm Tonya Matthews. I work for the treasurer's office for D G.
Oh, okay. I remember that.
Okay. So yes, there are quite a few flags on there. They changed up, uh, initial in quite a few places and then.
So it looks to be going up to fourteen dollars, ten dollars?
Say that again.
No, our permanent, we keep the same plan. It looks to be going up.
Yes, so our, our grandfather plan that we've been in for some years now, um, there's been no indication that.
Health is going up fourteen dollars thirty-six cents a month. Dental, three dollars twenty cents a month. Life's not changing according to this. Health for children's going up eight dollars a month for those. I don't know anybody can afford that. I, I, my children are small. I couldn't afford to put them under the insurance or something like that, but it is what it is. Very expensive. Yeah. Now spouse care, it's going up. Health is going up fifteen dollars. Dental going up four dollars. Family plan, health is going up twenty-three, eighty-six and dental eight. And just a few of us, it's got our wives on there, I believe. It's a, it's great insurance, but to put your dependents on there, it's pretty high.
Yeah.
But all of the time, you know, everybody's.
Sure. Yeah. So across the board, uh, commonly most, uh, who that, uh, employee's on white dependent is children is pretty common. Um, and other rates that what I've been compared to, to other employees, we see that the children.
I understand. I had four kids. I didn't know, I guess I figured out what was causing that, but that poor child and all that insurance was called prohibitive for me back to what it pays twenty years ago when I was doing.
Good thing it's not poor child. So if they do.
Yes, ma'am. They're not taking out any, you know, keeping it about the same, but taking out some really good coverage or nothing like.
There are no changes to the benefit plan. Um, the only thing that, um, where you've mentioned that increases, uh, across the board through TAC as being a part of the poll, they, um, have put out that generally most of the other counties have had a six percent increase in their benefit premiums. Um, we only saw in our medical, it was a one point, let me find it, one point seven percent in the health plan. Uh, dental plan was a thirteen percent. Um, and then the rest of it was at a zero. The dental seen an increase due to the enrichment of the premiums, uh, the benefits, a couple of years back, um, and that, so that just with the loss ratio of the last twelve months, they had to do an increase because of the increase of usage of the dental plan. So, um.
May I have a recommendation to the court about what we should do?
Uh, remain same grandfather plan.
So, so I'm okay with that. Do we use the same plan? It's a health insurance, retired health insurance not in this plan. We're going to have to let it be a different kind?
Yes, that is a separate renewal. Yes.
I'm excited to approve the current plan.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Matuno, a second by Commissioner Domine. Any questions? All in fair say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, that's unanimous, five to zero. Initial I usually sign everything that's as we go by, so you sit. Uh, twenty-eight, eight. So I guess about twenty-six. You probably can't see it. I'm not sure whether this changes. I don't know. I haven't even signed this.
There's changes that they can add.
There's standards here, but I don't know.
There's changes, you know, that you had mentioned, so I worked that into that.
Oh, yeah.
Any change out of the map?
This is just bringing about.
I, I.
You want me to initial?
That's fine.
Yes.
We want to make sure that we get that changed.
I'm questioning. Do you know what they take that truck, that old big truck, anybody?
That ain't that.
I don't.
The roll off.
No, baby.
Of the.
That Ford.
I've ordered it in a holder.
I think about fifty-five.
The dollar I think.
One of the side that's down on the seventy-four. That's so, they beat me by about forty dollars. Did you rip me out of it?
I ripped, I ripped scared. Look, I thought they paid fifty-five for it.
Just so I could see. I looked at it and I was relieved, I believed that somebody went past me. I didn't really hurt this kid. I was going for action on the. I did too, because we don't ever do nothing for shit. We spent four hundred thousand dollars on a car. All right, ma'am. All right, let's don't go there. You could have stood up and said, hey. We could have stood up and said, yeah, that's why I'd be up there over here too. I made a motion to put it in shift for a little, reluctantly, but I seconded it. I get it. Fire track supply is going good. You got us a mountain of dirt over there, about twenty acres or ten acres.
I realize that's tiny. It's like they walk off Sonic from there.
I don't usually stand.
You guys have mountain dirt, I guess. From that track supply.
Drive it down.
Yep.
I drove by there the other day. I didn't see it.
Thirty, thirty.
We all, I saw they had equipment out there and stuff.
I don't see a mountain of dirt, I guess.
They brought you the dirt?
Yeah.
I'll move. It'll help. We're going to be off.
Yeah.
That'd probably be, that's good dirt.
They play.
You mean drive by there for lunch and grill? Go buy a load.
Okay.
We can do surprise.
I knew they were doing dirt work. Didn't know what they would do with. It is a good
We got some other things in the process, Captain, too.
Do you tell?
Um, do you tell? Their power plant's on the end of the county. So in that county, basically at the county line.
Mm-hmm.
I don't ever recall this much.
Is that going to be a cogian? The cogian? Is it cogian or conventional?
No, no.
It's a P K punch. It's a cogian. It's a, it's a weak, big jet turbine. Big.
I'm not sending somebody huge.
Sending the acres.
I would take a bagging.
I'll be a three and five. Hundred fifty employees. It's a big project. And you know what it's going to blow?
We do, we pay with two every time.
Did it rain over two to five?
It's coming.
It's raining.
We just got weather, I just got weather alert.
It's coming.
It's coming here.
Who's got a phone in the room?
Uh, man from the church. He pointed Mr. David out.
So, this house.
His house.
Yeah. I can't.
He said, look at those roofies, he pointed at Mr. David. Hey, my wife don't wanna be climbing up.
So, Mr. Butler, we heard that President is moving.
Say it's already.
It's what I heard.
Who's President?
Oh, who's new president? I have an article, I can't.
Or give him over to. Uh, he's the comment on state.
I wonder, I wonder if, did he get, did he get some progress there, did he get a little more?
That's a really good question, I don't know.
Took this one out. I think you like what I have, honey. It's like.
I thank you, God.
Out of number seventeen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve refund. Addendum presented, I didn't have it in backup, I see something now. What, what do you mean, a refund for what?
A permit, I came in, um, and got a permit, April the eighth, I thought I submitted back up.
Who, what?
To get a development permit for, uh, next construction, but, you know, I want you to remember the date, March the eighth, and they did not come into my office asking for a refund until June the second. It is on their receipt that we do not offer refunds, it is posted in our office that we do not do refunds, but.
Is Christie Sarsen here?
No.
They're not, I'm not sure what side of the fence you're on on this. All you said was put on the agenda as a refund.
Yeah, I didn't feel like the permit department issue a refund without going to court.
So, you only issued, they paid two fifty, the address, address and a building, and you only want to give back the two hundred, is that correct?
They're asking for a refund.
Not, not the address and permit.
No.
Did they fill out an application?
Yes.
And did y'all do any work on the application?
We, we completed the application, even sent in an email copy of their permit.
Didn't they wanna, they wanna change their mind?
Now they wanna change, yeah, now they're saying that we're, they're not ready to do. I mean, there is a website on the property already.
Okay, so.
You have to post it all over, still refunds up there.
You took up your time doing whatever. Whoever issued the refund? It's you, Colin? Not as late as I work out, but.
Yeah.
Where's this open, where's this at?
It is, uh, Town Home Road right here in, um.
Zane Shepherd's.
Yeah, exactly.
I never heard of it.
Uh, over.
It's not saying that high as late.
No, Town Road.
Town Road, okay.
Behind Sheikum.
Yeah, right behind Sheikum. Like the last road on the left.
Well, did you check, did they get power with the permit?
I had not, I was trying to call Sheikum yesterday and I was, had a family emergency.
Is that, so if they walk into county clerk, bring me money and say, I want to accord this deed, and then they come back later and say, well, I really don't want to do that.
I made the motion, we don't give them a refund.
I have a motion by Commissioner Morris, second by Commissioner Swin, uh, now, if they change their mind later, they still got?
It's still valid for one thousand.
Think that's good, sure they make up their mind within a year, huh?
Yeah. When it's thirteen months, we'll have to come back and say, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll notice that. Yeah, we can probably do that. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, avid, two numbers, five to zero. Especially Laurie, I still don't know which way she wanted. Out of number eighteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve and grant a variance of four point three acres out of a nineteen acre tract in the William Morris survey abstract number thirty-eight for Frank and Laurie Palacio.
Judge, we have a plot, it's backup, and you should see the survey with the five foot drainage movement, um, they've got plenty of road frontage. And it is on the county road, so I make the motion to approve the variance.
I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Muntzino, a second by Commissioner Dominy, so. They, they got like nineteen acres, and they want to cut four, four point three off.
Go ahead.
How much road frontage is that?
Uh, let's look at, I'll tell you.
I mean, I'm looking at flash, I don't see the amount of field loads there. It says there's a five foot drainage movement, it says there's a half inch, I don't see a distance.
L one, L two. L one, L two, one seventeen, one thirty-one.
Is that L one or L two? Where do you see that?
It's up at the top right hand corner, there's a scale.
Ain't no scale on the top right hand of mine.
Top lip.
You said top right hand, I don't see one. Oh, I got the, y'all got the secret map, I can just wear it.
We got the same one.
We got your secret.
But we handed it, we did it.
Mine doesn't have it on. Okay, so they don't show L one or L two. I see that on here.
Cause he's.
I'm used to being left out of the. One, one, seven, yes, took a total of two hundred and forty-eight feet, that's, that's how he, he know hard burn does, he wouldn't have made the motion. Is it going to, uh?
Says they're walking around there.
Yeah. Yeah, he made a motion, and we got a secret. Well, let the record reflect, Commissioner's fine move, he made the motion, it looks like we got two hundred and forty-eight foot of frontage, which is way more than our minimum. We just did one with sixty feet earlier, so I don't see anything wrong with it. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, avid, two numbers, five to zero. Out of number nineteen, consideration discussion possible vote to open and accept received bids for San Simi County bid number twenty-six hundred oh five, that's two five, wrap and deliveries. Well, went to the, uh, I'm going to the fall game, so I don't carry a blade when I'm going to the fall game. Commissioner, any of that shrapnel you pocket?
I do.
Come on. I got taken from a tenant, I stuck it under a bush, and somebody must have been watching me or something, or either, I forgot what bush it was.
They had the name down there.
Open and accept received bids. We got one from Rebel, the first one is Rebel Contractors. And what project is this?
It's, it's material.
Oh, it's just material.
All part to each precinct.
And we, we voted to do that a couple meetings back.
We're gonna try to set some note, if we get through this line. Well, here's the deal, I got Chris on my question.
Comment about you now, it's better than what I got.
Glad to see y'all last minute.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Tommy, do I need a bid on that?
You got a hand that can put a net on most any of them. Rebel Contractors can deliver the asphalt milling material for San Simi County, fifteen dollars a ton. I'm kidding you, guys, forty-four dollars a ton. Forty-four dollars a ton delivered. That's what it says. We look forward to working with you again.
Won't you put it on my road?
Uh, deadline was June the fifth, I presume we got here all the time. Yeah, we got that, that's forty-six minutes to spare. Yeah, I forget, why is it we're, is this, we didn't bid it delivered before, is that why we're doing?
Uh, no, we didn't, we don't bid recycling asphalt in, um, yearly.
Okay, I get it.
This is some material that came up, and all eight to five is to prove it to Commissioner's court.
Okay, so that's Rebel's bid, the next one is preferred pipe distributor. Out of Warner, Texas. Okay, bid on preferred pipe distributors, L L's. He's delivering, he's taking a bid on pipe, is that right, Coors?
Anything.
Well, shouldn't be, well, it says. It says up at the top, road and mail rack materials, eight precinct, and it says four inch to sixty, I will, I distanced, off the ethylene HDB pipe.
I said everything, I said everybody else, he just did his own thing again. I don't think anybody got more, even if they do a specific thing.
Listen, he's got a whole bunch of, it's a hundred and six dollars a foot for sixty inch pipe, I don't know if that's good or not, but we didn't ask for bids for sixty inch pipe or no other pipe. I mean, he does say road and mail appear to each precinct, but he don't have no price. I don't, I'm guessing we should reject this bid.
Unless, y'all got a, and you can call him and say, hey, what are you, what are you bidding on?
It's too late now. Unless you got some kind of tool that your grinding device will turn pipe into road and, you wanna grind it up, turn it in.
He was just a public ego, he worked with the angel material, he didn't come down yet.
Yeah.
I'm not buying the road and mail.
Okay, so, I'm gonna say we're gonna reject, cause there's no, no price given, that's all about. Anybody that's come up?
It's a second.
I'm asking the price, I'm just gonna say we, well, when we, when we do the motions, I anticipate we may, I don't, sometimes we accept more than a bid, I don't know about that's gonna work here. All right, I got one last one. Has it been up? I think I said during the meeting, I said, we ought to tell them on there to write, this is a bid, so that the court go open, they rescinded, I guess.
It states that paperwork is even highlighted, that it's not reading.
This one was, was received well, well in advance, May the twenty-seventh, well, well before June, this is from Adams Contractors. They opened the, they opened the one on the inside, is what, ain't figuring out it was a new girl, throwing her under the bus, I haven't mentioned her name.
She knows that.
Last one was forty-four, now please, forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Pretty suspicious.
Material is located FM sixteen ninety-six, I forty-five Huntsville. Material price loaded at the site is about ten thousand tons or more, twenty-six dollars a ton, five thousand dollars, I mean, five thousand tons is twenty-eight dollars a ton, twenty-five hundred tons, twenty-nine dollars a ton. Material delivered to the precinct barns is as follows. Precinct one, thirteen dollars a ton. Precinct two, fourteen fifty a ton. Precinct three, thirteen dollars a ton. Precinct four, nine dollars a ton. That's all has to do with the logistics.
You said nine is thirteen.
Here's this thirteen, so thirteen and twenty-six is thirty-nine. So thirteen and twenty-six is thirty-nine. Thirteen and twenty-eight is forty-one. Let's see. If you've got... Even at the lowest amount, twenty-nine dollars, fourteen fifty, on to that is forty-three fifty. So that's still cheaper in all ways you can put it together than the other bid. So you said it's only fifty-seven for Mr. Mars. It's a little bit cheaper, but like for... Well, for Commissioner Donnie, nine. If he got over ten thousand, that'd be nine. And twenty-six makes thirty-five, ten dollars. About twenty-five percent cheaper for to buy it. Forward, that's for you to buy it, I mean. That's right. Thirty-nine, it'd be thirty-nine dollars. I count for it, so don't include. The last bid is Adams Contractors.
I'll make motion to approve, to accept Adams Contractors' bid.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Sweeney to accept Adams Contractors' bid. Second, by Commissioner Sweeney, to accept Adams Contractors' bid. Do we still have a copy of the vice here? Y'all want a copy? Thanks, I appreciate it. Thanks for the use of my blade. We voted... Did we vote final? I thought we did.
We did. I voted aye.
Everybody vote aye? Any opposed? All right, I vote aye. Item number twenty-one, item twenty-two. Item number twenty. Consideration discussion possible, vote to approve OLS grant for training.
You look like a jolly stand jolly.
I like to think I'm a little more handsome than you. It's hand taller. And somewhat a little bit more intelligent.
My condolences to the family for the loss of your uncle.
Thank you, Judge.
Tom, I'm the pastor. Twenty-year, at least twenty-year DPS retiree, was here stationed in Coles, Springs. I remember old Tom, they come out with that seatbelt on back of the first station here. I still put my seatbelt on because of Tom. He was a good man. Good man.
Thank you, Judge. Basically, this is a Defense Technology Quarter Millimeter LMT Tactical Single Launcher. A lot of direct impact DC rounds and...
Launcher?
Yes, sir.
It sits here?
Yes, sir, it's for training and for operations.
As long as you ain't launching it in my direction.
No, sir.
Where are we launching anyway?
So basically, it's a less lethal tactical launcher. In law enforcement, you know, you've got your different... Your different phases of uses for soft hand, hard hand, OC pepper spray.
I only say that because I saw they've got something out there now that they mount on cars and they push a button. You pull it up the side of a car and it launches this steel out in front of your tires.
Oh, spot tris.
Yeah, but it's... This thing look to the car.
Yes, sir.
You gotta get right up the side of it and I thought, "I've never seen one of them." That's not what we're getting.
No, sir. No, sir. This is similar to... You're familiar with an M two oh three military grade? I know you are, Commissioner Sweeney. Basically, it's to propel less lethal chemical munitions in the event of...
Less stronger pepper spray?
Yes, sir. Pepper spray, CS, barricade penetrating rounds. And the reason being is, in the last, I guess, two months, we've had two barricaded suspects inside their homes. We had no way of getting them out without... You know, of course, we're gonna negotiate with them. That's our number one means to get them out, but sometimes some of these people are on narcotics and they're not very reasonable. So we have to resort to other means in order to get them out of the structures.
So that total price is forty-seven hundred dollars?
Yes, sir, for everything.
I make a motion to approve. You just get one of them?
Yes, sir, this one.
I got a motion by Commissioner...
That's kind of what I was thinking. Commissioner Donnie, we might need Saturday. I don't know if we'll get it in that soon, though.
I got a second by Commissioner Donnie, I believe. To approve twenty-seven hundred and nineteen dollars spent on operational...
Yes, sir. So the county may reimburse for the money.
Can you give us some help with the information?
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes and a noes, you now is four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. All right, item number twenty-one. Consideration discussion possible, vote... Yes, ma'am. Let me go back to... I'll stay right there. Item number five, announcement impossible discussion on items of public or community interest for which no action will be taken.
I just got a phone call. They have a PR person that they hired to do all donations and stuff like that. Told them about the park. They told us to send them the information that we have on the signage and everything else, and they'll get back with us in the morning.
You're working on hitting bids on the park?
Just the parking lot, yes.
This is the park on Slade over there by Head Start property that we provided the land for the Head Start consideration. That's actually a book. Good move. All right, back to item number twenty-one. San Jose County Sheriff's Office requesting approval from San Jose County Commissioner's Court. And I always put this language in here, and I tweaked your request to declare surplus or salvage and remove the items listed below from our inventory and approve the sale or destruction of damage for broken accessories. Laptop from DOJ. We got Dell, approved HP, HP one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Dell Attitude Computers and HP Pro Book. Panasonic CF fifty-three, two of those from DOJ. Five Army Field Desks. Not from DOJ. One metal detector model, bounty hunter, not working. So this is what, about thirty? Always that comes, maybe what they pile up in the background?
They have had the heart drive removed, from what I understand at this point. So they are just legacy systems that no longer work.
I want to get rid of this hammer. I'd put it on the agenda.
I saw a toaster one time up here, so I think we're discovering our bases.
So you want to... None of it works? So you want to declare all of it as salvage, so throw it in the dumpster?
I don't know if they plan on salvaging or trying to sell it off.
I think what they plan to do is run it up the sales.
I mean, they light it up and something, but I don't know exactly where you're going to... They probably have a minimum on for make base. I really don't know. I guess we believe all of them are little extra. I don't know how to market such a top quality apparatus. Just tell us how we want it, so we'll know how to structure the motion to declare surplus.
I'll make the motion to declare salvage, and that means throw it in the... Or the metal running.
Years ago, there was a guy that could get these computers when they were... You know, monitor was this big and there wasn't a place you could take it and they would obstruct that. What's the proper... I knew the precious metals, gold or whatever. I knew a guy that was into that, but I'm like, "These things now are tiny, there's..." Did I get a second on the motion? I'm running out of seconds.
Who's second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton, a second by Commissioner Sweeney to declare it salvage. All these items on the agenda, except for the metal. If they got metal, is it gonna run across the screen?
Someone asked me the other day if we did that as a count, how will they be able to contact us about pulling out whatever's in the metal that's in them?
Pulling out? That's already at the door?
Listen, they went back into that in nineteen ninety-six and old boy working at the dump was coloring the beer cans and making himself a little more money. County judge at that time coming down, running like a bolt to lightning. Then unless we had to haul off, they didn't want to hand making money off. And that's the history lesson for today of whether or not you can do that. The court's free to do whatever, but that's why they don't... They're not supposed to be at least coordinating what was done then.
Taking anything.
Taking it out, but...
I think that was our friend, Mr. John Hastings.
Oh, you know, some people, when their hot water heater goes out, they just go buy a new one and take one that looks brand new. All you gotta do is open that valve, run a water hose in, put a new deal in. If a fellow could help himself and... I personally have no problem with that. I've done that myself, but not from the dump. So anyway, I hope that answers the question. So any other comments? All in favor of item twenty-one, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes and a noes, you now is aye up to zero. Item twenty-two, consideration discussion possible, vote to approve San Jose County Sheriff's Office request to declare surplus or salvage. Following items and remove these items from the list, list to blow off of our inventory and approve the sale or destruction of non-running vehicle. Each of these vehicles has experienced significant mechanical failures and is now inoperable. Per cost of vehicle value of vehicle, make it available for ten years. Two thousand nineteen Ford F-150. Two-three, two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Silverados. One two thousand eight Escalade. One nineteen ninety-nine Ford pickup.
I'd like to ask a quick question on this. Instead of selling one of them, can we get maybe me and Mark while there, look at one and see if we can get a good enough one for the maintenance use?
I think that's what BP came up with.
Yeah.
Yeah. He wouldn't give me any information. I said, "Yeah, let's go look at it." He wouldn't tell me.
Yeah, just, you know, we don't care.
The binds are good on them. I think... I don't know if any one of the six... Well, the four patrol trucks are what y'all are looking at. Probably not the Escalade or the ones that sneaks around.
We just want to have the opportunity to go... Before y'all do this, let's go look at one, see if we can find one for maintenance.
I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want us getting behind on us getting rid of these trucks.
Maintenance needs another bid? They got five. They got five. They need something, they just...
So he treated it as surplus?
So I mean, I'd like the motion to pass, and then if you want to take one of these trucks out, act with motion, I'm good with that. As long as y'all know that.
Well, they can do what? Circles or salvage?
Circles.
Circles. Have a motion by Commissioner Mark to declare the surplus. Have a second by Commissioner Donnie. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I have a question.
What is your name, young man?
Wayne Schultz.
Wayne Schultz. How long you been with the department?
Since we all came on in January.
I'm just terrible with names.
Yeah, I run the investigation division.
Over, basically.
Yeah, I am.
He's only an overcount of it.
So my own question is, we can go ahead and... Once I come over, we can still get rid of all of them with this motion, right?
To get rid of them, you prefer them in surplus, so that means you're putting them on...
But it's...
We're named basis who we use.
We'll put them on GovDeals.
They put them on GovDeals.
Right.
But after they look at...
Yeah.
Do we have a contract with GovDeal?
We didn't.
Listen, listen. They were just putting stuff on there without getting the court's permission. And I don't remember us having a contract with GovDeal. That's all. Did we? I think we started selling stuff. They sold a bunch of air conditioners the other day that... The DA thought we were saving and blah, blah, blah. That's why I'm asking you about GovDeals, because I don't... I've been here twenty-five years. I don't remember... They might have did it during the loaded era and approved the GovDeals contract. There's nothing against them, but if you're doing business with them, we have to have some sort of little contract.
When you sell, we decide whether it goes to seizure fund or if it's county loan. But as far as the next team that comes, you have to go with the other.
So here's the bid. We's GovDeals. Do we have a contract with them? Yes, so we have a contract with them.
So we have a contract that the court did not sanction, that did not approve. They also had a contract with... What's the name of that contract? They spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through an illegal contract.
But you're right, and that's why I want to get ahead of it.
We're trying to get ahead of that.
So we need to get a contract approved through Commissioner's Court.
It's so jurisdictional. That have you for the grand period for proving that. You trying to prove the beer salt... I don't know, Stan, I don't know.
Well, we'll be right there later. But yeah, we'll get that on next Commissioner's Court. We'll do that. That worth it?
Whatever you want to do, or...
Well, it's not whatever I want to do. I need to know what's right to do, because...
I just think you need to bring a contract for it.
That's all I need to do. We'll make that happen.
Or you put them on... Either way, we're...
We've been having pretty good luck with GovDeals.
I don't know.
So, yeah, we'll put it up on next Commissioner's Court. We'll make that happen.
I don't know.
Hey, you're one of them getting shit. What are you talking about? You want to know?
Let me cover this mark.
Poo poo. I'm not poo poo. So I'll get with you and we'll get that done and make it next Commissioner's Court. Good?
Yeah, okay. You're gonna sell it from Gov... With GovDeals, once we get it done.
I'll do a contract with both of them and we'll go to either one that's better. We already have one.
Yes, we already have one.
I'll find that out from them too and we'll get with Gary on that stuff too.
If you don't use one of those, one or the other, and have a contract with them, then you have to run it to San Jose.
Oh, yeah, we'll make it happen.
And hope somebody reads it and...
What's my name, dude?
Yeah.
I'm Wayne Schultz.
I think Mark has one question.
So who's my client today? If we want to go with...
Me. You got my card?
No.
So these are... These are none of these enter us to...
They're gonna watch county, bro. They're from state. Thank you, sir.
Wayne Schultz. You can't forget me. I'm like Batman, Bruce Wayne. Oh, I'm sorry. I just got run for you. And I blacked that thing out.
Are they all county vehicles or some seizures?
No. One of them was a seizure, but was turned into a county vehicle. That's correct. Yes. They are all county vehicles. They reduce for law enforcement purposes.
We're just trying to encourage a little bit of attention.
I've done other book communication. I love communication.
I've been here when they sold all these air conditioners. But the DA has a hand in the seizure. His air conditioner went out the other day. We had some light new air conditioners. They got sold some minis, and we had spent eighty-five hundred dollars.
We don't want that. Because that's supposed to be yours. We don't want that.
Yes, thank you so much.
One other thing is how we have.
I've got one more item here, uh, twenty-three, consideration discussion possible.
Granted.
Approve the quote when they do, item one on recording system to be reimbursed by debt card.
So basically debt card gonna replace the nine-one-one recording system at no cost to the county. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner. Are second by Commissioner. Donnie, so, debt, uh, federal funds and they're gonna re, they're gonna pay for a new nine-one-one recording system, that's it, sure.
Yes, sir.
Mark, did you approve that one?
I was just kidding with that, I, I don't, uh, he won't take much credit, but I see, I, I wanna, I, let me tell, Commissioner, the next meeting in Lufkin is gonna be, uh, sworn in as the president of debt card, so, uh, he are, he's represented the county in debt card for a long time, he's done a good job typing all them big cardboard checks, and, uh, we probably didn't have to even say it, we're really good benefits, and we appreciate you serving.
So, here in San San County or Lufkin?
Lufkin.
Can, can I make one comment?
San San County, we're doing Lufkin.
A lot of times they just come in and reinstall that equipment, and they don't take out all the old wiring and stuff, it makes a mess over there.
That's the couple that they go on. Commercial, electrical. All right, I have a motion of a second, any other comments, all in favor say aye, any opposed, eyes have it at two nine, it's five to zero. Item number twenty-four, standard consideration discussion possible vote approved necessary actions for purchases under the operation of Star Green, anything else?
No, so I think, uh.
Don't bother with other kids' models. All right, let's go, uh. Yes, sir. Item number six, consider approval of. Who's the president?
So, so how's that repair work? Is that two thousand dollars, you had to go with insurance, thirty percent?
Most insurance.
They get some lawyer. Yeah. Wow. Hey, if you owe, y'all have to pay it, but it's really hard to pay them. Look at this, y'all. Wanna see my shit? It was getting, what was the deal? I said it in the flood. They were caught trapped out there. I agree, I was an engineer to come, that's why I told them that. I was a engineer. One says that, please. I remember, we all down in here. Probably thirty foot wide. Hey, geez, I don't.
Yes, it's not really that kind of power.
A check supply. The wrist get a little bit of workout. Yeah. I guess tells them. It's a close year, sir.
Sounds like this'll be a pressure test.
Well. Because they wouldn't call my generator because of this, and so frankly, they said we're probably first next to them, and we're going to get a car. I don't know, I don't like going to get a car. Well, I'll be over there if the road's not flooded, so, you know. There's nobody to get me going home, uh, so, I don't have any power. So you'll find out here, you're just a medical contractor. I don't think a roofing contractor's taking that, but y'all have a good one, y'all need some good hardware, Chris. Okay, thank you, you got the trouble. Information about. You haven't seen that? Any other motion, we'll play the bill. I'll second it. I have a motion that, uh, that's, that's, that's. Uh, aye, any opposed? Uh, it's a, it's a, uh, uh, three, uh, yes. Item number seven, consider approval of budget amendments revenue certification. Well, that's fine, make, make motion.
And I second. I do, I get nine hours, I'm ready to.
That motion's not. Clear by, recent home, sir, sir, I have a wondering. Hundred forty-two thousand dollars for revenue, for second home. Yes. Sixteen thousand, two hundred. Hang on, sir, sir. Any comments, all in? Budget amendments revenue certification, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, eyes have it at two nine, it's five to zero.
You're alive, for your lady, go with your umbrella.
All right, now, thanks, brush out, I guess I'll be prepared. I'll make that motion. I'm second, all in favor say aye, any opposed, stay here.